Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Diane is missing. Approval of the agenda. We have a few changes. Eight B. We can remove that off the agenda for tonight. And then under new business. On nine A will be CBB. And then on the consent agenda, ten D. Application for exempt permit, Center mat youth wrestling. Is there any other changes? Council have any? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those additions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the December fourth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. You all received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the December fourth regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council?
Matthew Schmitz, two twenty Oak Street. I just wanted to address some behavior at the last meeting that I spoke at and others as well that I felt was inappropriate. You see, it was your ignorance that dragged me here to begin with. Your refusal to reply to my emails and your refusal to meet me, meet with me in private to discuss this matter. That would have been a much more appropriate way to handle this matter, but you guys just simply didn't want to do that. So you have no right to get angry at me for coming here and simply stating how and why that child was brought to not one, but two different houses to be abused. And I feel like you don't have any right to start barking questions at me like some sort of mad dog when you know that you're never going to allow me to answer anyways. And lastly, the snide remarks the moment I leave are also inappropriate. If you can't respect me, I want you to at least respect the fact that this child was abused in the foster care system. And it's not something that's funny or should be joked about. I would like to propose a settlement between the city of Sock Center and the child. I think you owe it to this child to make that settlement for the negligence of your police department and the actions of your officers that resulted in this child being exposed to domestic violence, sexual abuse, and neglect. Twice the child was delivered into homes of these same men and women who had hurt the child the first time. People who were involved in some weird love triangle that they're involving their children into by having the child date their children. And you can sit there and cry all you want about the county, but this was nothing more than child trafficking that your officers participated in. The county never could have abused this child the way they did without the full cooperation and participation of your police department. And it was their willingness to throw this child to the wolves that made it all possible. They cared more about covering up that child's allegation of abuse and pleasing the county than they cared about protecting that child. I don't know how many children this has happened to, but this was the wrong child for them to do it to. Because I am willing to stand here and show the world just how poorly a person gets treated when they try to stand up against corruption in the police department and the government.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We will move on to reports and presentations. Police Department monthly report, Joe.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. And you look in your packet, you can see the new, our new record system there. You see November first through eleventh is the old numbers. You kind of get an idea of how the new numbers are after that. When you look at it, there's not quite as many event category names that kind of break it down, kind of dumb it down a little bit. The only big change that we're looking at that we're still trying to figure out is on the old, the old way of doing it. It showed the breakdown of citations and some of the crime stats. With our new ticket software, we're still trying to figure out how to pull those stats out so we can add them to the month report. We just can't do that yet. We can see how many traffic stops we made. We're just trying to figure out how to break down the actual numbers of what citations we issued. And that'll come, we're just still working through the kinks of that program. But if you look at it, seven hundred and forty-five ICRs for the month, which is put on par, kind of average. A lot of those traffic, welfare checks. You'll see on the news, on the new forum, it says train event. I think that was supposed to be, someone was at training. Have any tracks in town. Handful, there was a handful of assist agencies. A lot of our calls in November were traffic related and welfare check related as far as that goes. So that, overall, November, nothing major to report. Things going forward here, last night we did host our shop with the cop event at the Walmart. That went real good. We took thirty kids shopping for Christmas event. Agencies from around the county come and help with that, so that went real good. Little winter parking update with the snow coming. I talked to Ben today, he came to the office. We got a pretty good plan. The winter parking's been going pretty good. Averaging three violations a night is what it's been since the first eighteen days here. Most of those have been warnings, but a couple repeat offenders, most of them, we give warnings and that's done. Couple repeat offenders have gotten citations already. Anything we find tonight, the next couple nights for sure are going to be automatic citations with the snow coming, but it's been much better start this year compared to last year as far as people complying and kind of figuring it out. So that's good.
Are we towing those then too?
We'll tow, so if we get the snow tonight, me and Ben talked about the need to get that downtown area cleared out. So I told the guys tonight, if anybody's parked in that downtown area, I don't think we're having enough snow by tonight, we're going to be able to. But tomorrow night too, if anybody's in that two AM, that those major areas, yeah, we're just going to tow them out of the way. And we talked, if we get a significant amount of snow and if the wind picks up, we might just even call a snow emergency so they can get stuff done in the mornings too and keep people off till we get them all cleared, so.
No.
Me and Ben are working together on that. Like I said, if it comes down to if we need to start towing, we will. We'll try to, we'll try to knock on doors and get people to move them, but we can only spend so much time with each one, so if we have to, we'll tow them.
We've talked in the past about allowances during the holidays, is that still the consideration?
And we'll be cool with it, like next, it looks like in the forecast, we got the snow coming here and then over Christmas, it looks like it's going to be decent, so. Yeah, during the Christmas time there, we'll try to work with people. Even this weekend, hopefully we get them cleared off, but this weekend, I know a lot of people have holiday stuff this weekend, stuff too. We'd rather, on these type of things, especially if people are drinking, you know, we'll make some exceptions during that. And we might go knock the door and talk to them, but we'll figure something out so we are not the Grinch Toby this holiday season.
And one of the, one of the things, just to interject on that, that Joe and I had talked about, a lot of people, if you got people visiting. As a person that's allowing them in your house, at least tell them, where are you parked? Can you move your car off the street or you're going to get a ticket? You know, just be conscious of the fact of who's invited at your house could be parking illegal and get a ticket. It's kind of on you, you know?
So yeah, we'll accommodate, we'll try to help as much as we can by giving people a heads up. We don't want to cost people more money, but they also got to follow the rules. So we're going to be fair but stern about it. Other than that, the new squad did come into Dan Willie's, that'll be ready for pickup here that first week, after the first year, they'll pick that up and I'll be able to get it outfitted. So we're looking on that, getting some of those parts ordered too. Any other questions?
No. Thank you. Public Works Department, Ben.
Good evening, mayor and council. Over the past month here, the bobbers that you see on top of the climbing poles, we removed those and had those sand blasted and powder coated. They were getting pretty poor shape there, so we wanted to get those taken care of before they got any worse. They turned out really nice and we're going to get those installed likely next week when it's a little warmer outside. Fish cleaning station, weekly maintenance going on there, just cleaning and making sure the heat's working and all that. There is some regular use going in the building now, so it's good to see. Outdoor rink, we did flood the rink for four days. It was able to be resurfaced now and it is ready for skating. Next week with school being out, we expect some heavy use down there. The forecast does look like temps above thirty degrees, so that's going to have a pretty negative effect on the ice, so we'll just keep an eye on it daily. And we'll keep it open as long as we can, but if it does get up to that thirty-five, like on Monday this week, it was pretty warm. And the ice is really soft, so it was actually unskatable on Monday just with those high temps. So hopefully it's cooler so the kids can use it, but as of now, it is ready to go and we will have somebody working there in the weekends. The arena, doing our weekly edging and ice maintenance and building maintenance up there. We did clean all the board glass with a special cleaner that's designed to remove the puck marks, so that turned out really nice getting that done. Cleared that glass up really good. There's a tournament there this weekend and then all of January has extremely busy schedule, especially on the weekends, a lot of tournaments. So a lot of people will be coming to town for that. All of our snow equipment is prepped and ready for the snowfall that's forecast for the remainder of the week. We did a bunch of brush mowing around some of our stormwater ponds, so that's done. And then the library had a little bit of a heat issue, but we got that stuff up, back up and running and working again, so. Those are the main things, is there anything I can answer for you?
Nope, thank you. Planning Commission, Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packet, you have a copy of our agenda from my December tenth planning commission meeting. We did not have any public hearings at that meeting. We did have some unfinished business about shoreline alterations that we is still working with that. The month of November, we had eight permits issued with a total construction value of two point zero, two point zero nine three million. A year ago, or, I'm sorry, a year ago, in October, nine permits were issued for a hundred ninety-two thousand. You have the shortlist of permits for November. And then it usually slows down, obviously for this time of the year. At the end of November, the tally for total, total new construction was eight point two million. And then I did. Sorry about that. The nuisance complaints, that was on your desk. So we had a total of about forty-eight nuisance complaints this year. Thirty-one have been taken care of. Five of them are on Lakeshore property, so it's still kind of ongoing process. Eight are still ongoing process. Three have been sent to attorney and one of them is a rental order for maintenance. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you. City Engineer Report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Quick update on the status of the twenty twenty-five capital improvements project. Things are actually going really well so far for such a big project. I'm pleased for where we're, where we're at at this point. Really, all the guts of the main design is done. We're kind of to what I call the dot in the i's and crossing the t's portion, you know, just getting those final details and those kinds of things at this stage. I do have all the comments from the PUC on the sewer water, it's already incorporated. Just received comments from Ben regarding to the, the street and the storm sewer and we'll be incorporating those into things. But things are going along very, very well at this point, so. Permitting wise, there's no real issues. The only permit we actually need is, is for a water main, so a Department of Health permit, which is pretty much send in something that's pretty, pretty simple forms, so there's no real issues there that could, could hamper things. So before you is the intended schedule moving forward. Really, I'd call your attention to the first and the third line items. Those are the two where you'll be making decision points essentially. The fifth will be the approved plans and specs, consider authorizing advertisement for bids. And then March fifth, a month later, would be when those bids would be considered. And that's when you decide whether that project will indeed move forward or not at that point. So those are kind of the two key things at that time. At that March fifth or, you know, a little beforehand, we'll do the updated assessments based upon the bids. So we have all those, that information as well that we can provide to the, to the public. And then really, I would anticipate, assume you move forward, we will, because it's something we, we want to have a long, as long as season as possible to construct. So we'd probably be looking at starting in the middle of May approximately on the project, which means there'll be those first few weeks, we'll have to coordinate with the schools relates to buses and those kinds of things. But that's what I would anticipate. And at this stage, we're still looking at a two-year project for this to be done, so. I guess with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Are we going to give the contractors the ability to decide if they can do it in one year?
Well, that's a decision that you need to make and decide to me. I guess I'm comfortable with allowing that option if you're willing to consider that. The pluses and minuses, the pluses is if we get done faster, the minuses is there'll be a lot of things tore up during one season. So it's kind of one of those, do you just sort of rip off the Band-Aid and, and tear it out in, in one year and get done with it? Or do we take that over a couple of seasons? So it's, it's kind of one of those, you know, how do you feel about that, you know? There will obviously be some, we always, the next year, as you know, put that wear course on. So no matter how you slice it, if it's a two-season project, there'll be some work even in the third year if we go that route. If it was a one-season project, it would be that second year, so.
The reason why I asked was because I've talked to a couple of people that work on water and sewer sites. And they said depending on what they have for work during the summer.
Yep.
There's a chance that they could easily come in with two or maybe even three crews and knock that whole area out in one, in summer.
Yep.
And be done. So that's the reason why, are we going to give them the option? And maybe when we get to that point, the council will have to think about it.
Yeah, and it's, it's something I'll need to put into the specifications for that. So I would say, you know, we don't need to decide tonight, but this should be a topic that we bring back in January. So one of our January meetings, we'll need to have a discussion about that and make those decisions so I can get that into, into the specifications for the bids. So, you know, so really it could even be that second meeting because we, we will have enough time at that point, so. So you can consider it, think about it. It really does depend on how much work there is in the, in the region. You know, if, if people don't have a lot of work, they will put a couple crews on it. I already know a couple that are, are watching this, they want this. And in fact, one of them, I think I'm going to actually send out to them to have them help with a little bit of some of the costs and to get some, you know, some nice air checking on what sort of costs they, they're thinking it would be. So at least for some of the big, kind of the bigger ticket items kind of things, just make sure that we're in the same ballpark as what they think it will be, so.
Sure. If I remember correctly, from a couple of the public hearings, I don't think there was much pushback when you had asked if people would be okay doing it all at once. Or, or as opposed to two years. I, I don't think people had strong opinions, so I think that was asked several times.
Yeah, well, I kind of brought that up and I, I can't remember if anyone really spoke to it, so.
I don't, I don't think anybody did.
No.
So.
If that is the specification, would you require that of every bid?
No, I think that the thing to do to get our best bids would be to allow it, but not require it.
Okay.
So it could still be a two-year project, but we could have the option for it being a one-year project.
One thing is, is if we limit it to one year, then we could lose half our bidders.
Right. That, we would not want to do that, that would be a bad, because then we're going to really limiting our bidders if we do that. So we really, I would not advise that we force it to be one year. We allow it to be one year.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities Report, which is myself. Last week, the Public Utilities Commission met and basically went over the five-year plan, capital improvements. Working hard on the new substation that'll be going in down just east of where the depot feeds building was. Still working on that and getting stuff in for it. And then the rates for twenty twenty-five were set. Electric rates will be going up seven percent. And water and sewer, both of them will be going up ten, ten percent each way. So, for both of them, so. Nothing's going down, but we've got new criteria with the wastewater treatment plant. We're getting new criteria from the state on water and the electricity, the, um, supplying the electricity on XLs lines. And everything else is going up besides, so we're just covering costs.
This is just usage rates, not flat rates, correct?
Usage rates, yeah. So the more you use, the more you're going to pay, so. Any questions about that or anything else that you've heard? Okay, we'll move on to action items. Seven A, approved resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh two establishing twenty twenty-five administrative fee schedule.
We have these first three items in front of you tonight, I'll have to do with fees and fines and penalties for the city of Sock Center. The first one is adopted by resolution, which is twenty twenty-four dash one oh two, and that is administrative fees. Administrative fees are things like renting city hall, renting a tea hanger at the airport, equipment charges for public works, campground fees, arena, senior center ambulance. Those are the types of fees that I'm talking about here. The administrative department just has one change, and that is a special, special assessment search from twenty to twenty-five dollars. We hadn't changed that since two thousand and eleven. There are some equipment charges in the street department. We're not hurrying out these things, but we have to have a fee schedule set. So if we ever have an insurance claim or a FEMA claim or something, we have the correct amount. So there are some equipment charge rates that are included in that. The other changes that we had in there was in the fire department. They had some call-out rates that were increased by a hundred dollars, had not been changed since two thousand and thirteen. And then in the ambulance department, their, their BLS runs and their ALS runs were changed by fifty dollars for the BLS and two hundred dollars for the ALS runs. And this just is to keep them able to be self-sustaining for the ambulance department, so they are fee-driven. So these fees help to keep them without having to rely on tax dollars. So those are the things that we are looking at. We're not, we're not proposing any fees in other, any of the other departments like the senior center, the arena, the police, or any of those. So the one thing in the campground, we do, we did add a fee, the park board recommended for the camper cabins. For Sunday through Thursday, it's backward on the fee schedule, by the way.
Yeah.
It's Friday and Saturday night is seventy dollars and the weeknights are sixty-five, so we'll have to change that. So that's the only things that are changed on the fee schedule, so that's resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash one oh two.
Questions, comments? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Shallen, second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, four in, four in favor, none against. Getting the habit. Yeah. Seven B, approved resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh three establishing twenty twenty-five schedule of penalties.
So this is adopted by a separate resolution, twenty twenty-four dash one oh three. This is administrative penalties. So these would be mostly, they're going to be fines or penalties of city code. Those might be nuisance, nuisance parking, they could be nuisances like the planning commission nuisances, like when Sarah made her report to you earlier tonight. Could be building maintenance, it could be cigarette or liquor license violation. So any violations of city code are considered an administrative penalty. And the people have the opportunity to like pay the penalty versus taking it to the next step. And so that is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh three. We are not proposing any increases in administrative penalties.
Questions, comments, changes? Building code violations, it's a hundred dollars a day if they don't get a permit. Right?
Correct.
Is that the maximum we can charge?
On the, on this is the building code or you're talking?
On the penalty.
I guess I would have to double-check that because I know that we have to adopt the state code. And if the state code is a hundred dollars, then that's what we, that's all we could do. I can check that for you though.
Okay, because I know Alexandria is ten times that.
Okay.
So that's the reason why I was, because, and they've, I'd like to, I'm going to try to get their wording and stuff. They've got three people that do nothing but code violations in the city of Alexandria and they're, and minute they see a violation, they get handed the ticket and it's an automatic fine. And if it's a no permit thing, the contractor is a cease and desist. Whether the building's wide open or not, it's cease and desist until the permit is. And it takes three weeks to get them a permit, it sits open for three weeks. And then the contractor also gets fined for doing anything without a permit.
And that's a thousand dollars a day, is what you're saying?
Yes, they kneel them hard. And they don't have a problem with people getting permits because they don't want to take the chance. So I'll try to get the language from them.
Yeah, because Alexandria has city staff that are there, building code. We have contract with Rick Holt for our building code, so I don't know if that would make a difference because they have staff people that do that versus ours is contracted out. But it's certainly something we can look at.
Kind of files in line with what I've been pushing for the last four years on the code enforcement officer's town. Someone that's on the street and sees what's going on. And stopping in at lumber yards and all of a sudden a truckload of lumber's going somewhere, well, somebody's building something, so. Okay, any other questions about that? Approved resolution, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh three?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven C, approve ordinance eight forty-three establishing twenty twenty-five fee schedule for licenses and permits.
So this section of the fee schedule has to do with, as you said, licenses and permits. This is for like residential rental licenses, golf cart licenses, liquor licenses, beer licenses. And then of course, the development related such as zoning permits and building permits, which the building permit side is based on the state of Minnesota. So we are not proposing any changes or any increases to the permits except for, we did add the cannabis-related registration fees, which we did that by ordinance already when we adopted the ordinance. But we include that in the license permit and service fees now. So that is ordinance eight forty-three.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-three?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve ordinance eight forty-four authorizing summary publication of ordinance eight forty-three.
That's exactly what this is, is eight, ordinance eight forty-four that authorizes us to publish just the summary of eight forty-three rather than it in its entirety. And this resolution will require a majority or a supermajority vote, so four of four of you would have to vote in the affirmative to allow us to publish ordinance eight forty-four.
Questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-four?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve board and commission appointments.
So we have several board and commission appointments here. We only have a couple appointments to, to, to place tonight. We do have, the park board has two positions that are open. The two expired terms have decided not to be up. And so I've been actually trying to get Shallen to apply for one of those positions as a member of the public, but he hasn't agreed yet.
I, I, I'm considering it, Vicky.
Okay. So in the planning commission, we do have one, one position for a three-year term. John Vorbrick has requested to return to that position. Public utility commissions, we have one position for a three-year term. Mark Roeburg's expired. He's requesting to return. He's the only applicant for that position. We have the senior center board. We have, have, nobody has applied to return to that at this point. And then the center care Sock Center board, we have two positions so far. Neil Lynchide has, has requested to come back. So really, we have one to the planning commission, John Vorbrick, one to the public utility commission, Mark Roeburg, and one to the center care Sock Center board, Neil Lynchide.
Questions, concerns?
So in summary, we need two people for the park board, two people for the senior center, and one person for center care.
Correct.
Yes.
And we'll keep, we keep advertising for those and, and we'll get, we'll get them filled.
The one thing with the park board is if we don't get two people to come on board, three people are deciding a lot of stuff that's gonna happen. And it has been talked in the few prior years that it might be a situation, if we can't get anybody interested in signing up, we're just gonna have to put that one to sleep for a while until we get people interested and the council starts taking over the park side. So, it's more work on our side.
At the end of the day, those three people make recommendations to us. We still ultimately make the decision on it. So, we, it's not those three people deciding everything, so.
But that's what we did with the library board.
Yeah.
So, that's the reason why I mentioned it. It's still an option. So. Do I have a motion to appoint John Vornebrock to the planning commission, Mark Roeburg to the PUC, and Neil Lynchide to the Sock, Center Care Sock Center board?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven F, approved purchase of gear from city of Avon Police Department.
So, as you know, we previously appointed the new officer who's gonna begin on January fifteenth, I believe it is. And he is a member of Stearns County SWAT and the city of Avon has purchased various equipment for his use and they'll have no need for it once he leaves their employment. So Chief Jensen has met with the chief of Avon. They've negotiated a price for the city. There, what I put in your packet before was an original negotiation that we had that has changed. Now we're just gonna be purchasing the tactical vest, which is two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars because he just got that in September. It's about brand-new and it's custom fitted to him. So that is what we're looking tonight to do, is to approve the purchase of that SWAT tactical vest from the city of Avon for two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Questions, comments?
Is there a reason why the remaining is not?
They had some additional equipment, too. They wanted us to buy that we didn't have a need for. And by the math, didn't really work out to buy that extra equipment. We were better off just to put that towards buying new of the other.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to authorize the purchase of the SWAT equipment?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven G, approved resolution 2024-104, authorizing installation of traffic control signs.
This, this conversation is about the intersection by Authers Edition. So when we developed Authers Edition and built half, half a day drive, there was concerns about the safety of that intersection because of cross-traffic and people were used to using Hickman as a through road. We did the yield signs on Half a Day and Hendrix and, and a lot of times those yield, but the Hickman going each way aren't. And so people aren't quite sure where to go. And now I've had various residents that live up in that area are now requesting that we look at seriously putting that into a four-way stop. So we talked about making, just going ahead and making it a four-way stop or, or we're gonna have to at least yield, yield Hickman that's coming southbound or to do some combination of that. I did talk to Chief Jensen and he's recommending just go with the four-way stop and just be done with it. And make sure that everybody stops in all directions before we have an accident up there. So that's the resolution I have in front of you today, to either do the yield at the, at the, on the Hickman from the northbound way or else go with the four-way stop.
Questions, concerns?
I feel like the, the four-way stop is the little overkill, considering the number of residents and what like level of traffic throughout the day. Obviously, end of day, beginning of day, workday. But when you consider the uncontrolled intersections at Birch, Pine, Ash, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, I feel like that has way more reason to have a controlled intersection than, than Hickman does. My question is, how many people in that area, is it, is it specific people numerous times complaining, or is it multiple people from that area?
I've had, I've had multiple people. I think part of, part of the issue is there's a lot of looky-loos that wanna drive up in there. They're coming up Hickman and they just go straight. And then someone's coming the other way on Hickman and they're not stopping. Neither of them are stopping, is what's happening. So we're getting people that are coming, they're going northbound on Hickman and they just go straight across into Authers where someone coming southbound on Hickman is coming as well. And they're gonna go south. And it's always that, I just, there's been a lot of near misses that I'm being told by people that live in that area. How many there are, I can't say for sure. Because we don't, you know, we don't have that, we don't know that information. It's just what we're hearing from people up there.
I know when we first just put that intersection in, it was quite a discussion on what we wanted to do and we figured we'd try it. So to me, right now, it'd be, you only make sense to go with what Chief Jensen is recommending. He's the one seeing, they're out there more, you know, I'm not out there every day. Joe's out there, but I mean.
I drive past there at least three times a day, seven-thirty when I go to work or seven-fifteen, five o'clock when I come home. Noon and at lunchtime. I mean, I hardly ever meet a car in that intersection, hardly ever.
Okay.
Like, there's no traffic. I've, one time I've been there where one car was heading north. I mean, had to be somebody who had no clue where they were. They just flew through that intersection into Half a Day thinking I'm, again, I mean, I have plenty of people driving down my dead end thinking they're gonna get to Ferry Lake Road. So, someone who's not familiar with the area. But yeah, I, I think, you know, with, as Heidi said, I think a four ways, ways overkill. I mean, people, you know, common sense tells you you're coming on Hickman and you're gonna head to the south, you know, if you're coming from the, it'll be, you know, traveling south, do the curve to the west to that intersection, then go back. It's like, if you're taking a left and someone's not signaling, probably assume they might be going straight and just yield. I mean, common sense, any controlled intersection as a driver. I almost think those two yield signs are confusing people more on those two roads that they're like, oh, we don't have to yield on the other side. Why not place that yield, take the yield sign off Half a Day, put it on Hickman for those people that are gonna hang a left there? And if you're going straight to the north, you just flow through the intersection, vice versa, and use your signal light.
So, a really interesting thing that you just brought to mind is that the A-plus Driving School uses that specific area to teach their students how to use yields. I know that she's also been showing students different point turnarounds on Kennicott. I know that just because I have a recently licensed driver. So she specifically stated, you know, to go up around that area to show students how to use it. So is it those students that are having the issue? That, that might not be, you know, aware enough to, to be looking?
You, you would know those students there because they'd say A-plus on that vehicle.
Well, yeah, but.
So, I mean.
I, I just, it's, it's a different thought about that area.
Having lived in that area, I also know Hickman has never been one that's been, anybody drove it slow. It's been a racetrack. And now all of a sudden, you gotta turn right ninety degrees. And, well, if I can make that corner, I'm gonna make that corner.
Oh, it's a lot slower.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a lot slower.
Yeah, because it, it never used to be.
So different than people coming off of the Lakeview horseshoe there that fly through that yield sign onto Hickman on that south side of the, the horseshoe there. There's a yield sign on that side. They fly through there. I think I've been hit, almost hit more times at Park Road stop sign where we have a stop sign, driving down Hickman, Willow, than I have anywhere else.
All the other ones.
People just go through that.
The other one is Center Street and Tenth. They blow through that one all the time, too.
Oh, yeah, up by the arena.
You know, there, that stop sign could be flipped upside down backwards as far as they care, but.
Could, could we give it a consideration? Because this is still such a new development that once those people who are established in the neighborhood have, you know, I mean, yes, this has been a year and a half that they've been exposed to this, these, this signage. But can we give it a little bit more time before we go full bore into a four-way stop?
I think that seems like a fair approach, is to just wait a little bit and let the newness wear off.
Yeah.
A year and a half? I got a problem with kicking the can down the road and not just settling the problem right now. We got a request. And it's coming from our police chief.
I, and I respect Joe for that.
Down the road is not solving the problem.
Hearing from people who live in the area, I feel like that's overkill, is my personal opinion.
Well.
And Joe is one of them as well, but.
We took that yield sign off Half a Day and put it on Hickman. And you slow, I mean, anyone's gonna turn because most, most likely you're not heading up into Hendrix if you're coming off Hickman. You're gonna be taking a left or a right.
Right.
You know, until, until Kennicott ties into that area. So, I mean, you put a yield sign there. I think that would be probably the confusion is people think, well, because I'm turning left and they're, might go straight or they could turn right. They think, well, it's a through street. I can go. And then that's where you'd have the, probably the miss. Somebody was gonna head straight, straight through there. So if you have a straight road with no yield, and you put the yield sign on the other side, they're like, okay, now I know I need to yield to that traffic. And again, if people are using their signal lights, like they should be, you know, if they're taking a right-hand turn, you can go ahead with your left-hand turn. They're at that, you know, if they're traveling north towards Half a Day and Authers.
Someone wanna make a motion? Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We move the yield sign off Half Day and put it on Hickman.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe to move the yield sign from Half a Day to Hickman.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries three in favor, one against. Seven H, approve resolution 2024-105, seeking quotes for rescue boat.
The Sock Center Fire Department has used a jet ski for water rescues for many years. The department is seeking to update its procedures with utilization of a rescue boat, which is specifically designed for these purposes. It can carry more, is more stable, and is designed for ease in moving victims from the water onto the boat. The purchase has been budgeted for 2025. However, with the delay of receipt and ordering, it's been requested the order be submitted now so it'll be available for use for the summer season. So what we're looking to is approve resolution 2024-105, authorizing a solicitation of quotes for the rescue boat.
Comments, questions? We used to have one, right? And then we got rid of it and went to the jet ski?
We had like a fishing boat, type boat, like a, was either a, I think it was a lawn boat or something. Then we went to the jet ski. But this rescue boat is like a, it's got a, you know what I'm talking about. The Stearns County has one.
Okay.
And it has, it has a spot on it. We can just go right up to the people and almost, almost scoop them up or pull them on.
Okay.
We do plan on keeping the jet ski as well, correct?
Pardon me?
We are keeping the jet ski as well, right?
I don't think so.
Where does that go?
Well, we would sell it.
Okay. No plans for it immediately, though?
We have, we have no plans for it. And if the department recommends we sell it, I imagine we would, sell it to the highest bidder.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2024-105?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries three in favor, none against, one abstention. Eight, unfinished business, 2025 building improvements operations committee.
So at the December fourth meeting, at the council meeting, the council directed that some outstanding building maintenance issues for various city buildings like the library windows, et cetera, be included in the overall project for the 2025. And so that would all be funded in part by that bond issue. And so we'd recommend that either the finance committee or the operation committee meet with staff so we can have a clear understanding, or the council has a clear understanding of what projects we're talking about, what the estimated budget would be before we get too far down the road. We don't want any surprises. So we would like to, to meet with either one of those committees as we move forward with this.
Okay. General consent, send that to operations?
Yeah, I think operations makes the most sense to start with it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Eight B was taken off, new business, CVB. I put that on there basically because I think we need to have a discussion of seeing what everybody's attitude is, is where the CVB stands as far as council. We got one report. We asked for a more in-depth report. What we got back, you all received the email from Vicky. She forwarded it on again. Do you think that's enough of a report? Or do we need to get in depth? Because I think they're not following their. The one thing is, I think Joe and Shallen, you said that we were going to get a yearly budget from them?
I'm, I'm not sure if it was the yearly budget we get or we were getting the quarterly reports. And then we'd get that year-end summary and everything on, on that. I'd have to go back to see if there was a budget that we would see.
We were supposed to be getting a budget. They did that in November and it's the end of the year and we haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I don't know if we talked about getting a copy of the budget or if it was just the reports, the year-end report and then the quarterly reports. And there was a template that was sent to them. Yeah, I think as far as like the reporting, I think we need to just probably provide them a little clarification more on the expectations so that they have a clear understanding on what type of reporting we're expecting. I mean, I, with what I sent back in May kind of was like events sponsored for the quarter, you know, quarter and things like that. And then provide like the feedback, like, are we advertising this, you know, periodical or magazine or whatever it was that I had sent to them. And I know that wasn't obviously what we got. But again, it's, it's probably seeking to understand, you know, what the expectation is for everybody on what that reporting should look like from them to us.
And even the answer back after we asked for more clarification, didn't have it wrote down like you two had said.
Yeah, there wasn't, yeah, there wasn't much in that, no.
It was just a form letter, basically. One of the things is, is, you know, in 2023, we handed them almost seventy-two thousand dollars. Now, to hand somebody, when a government is collecting taxes and you hand it, I don't care if they consider themselves a government agency or not. They're receiving money from us. We should be able to at least get a better idea of what they're spending the money on.
I agree.
And we're not getting it.
Well, that's why we gotta give them what our expectations are for what we're getting, what we need to be getting.
As far as I'm concerned, we did that twice. And we still got basically a form letter with no meat in it.
Oh, we got, they should be getting the fourth quarter report here coming up. So we'll see if that's improved.
So we're gonna ignore it until, okay.
Well, I, I wouldn't say, I, I don't know how we take action and do anything with, with it right now. I mean, we're at the end of the quarter. Let's see what they provide and get, make sure they understand what, you know, obviously me and Shallen kind of had our points and stuff. But, you know, if there's more needed from that, that probably needs to be communicated through Vicky to them.
Coming on, but there's still three of us that are gonna be here next month. So it's like, that's the reason why I'm bringing it up now, you know?
I think there's still frustration on their side, which was apparent after we met with those students, that when we brought up the, the city boards, the comment was made that the CVB is not a city board. So it, they still don't consider themselves responsible to the city.
And they're, right. But how can you collect money from the city and not be responsible to the city? That's the problem I have with it. To me, it's flashing what everything you see on the news now, government efficiency. You're handing a nonprofit group seventy-two thousand dollars a year and they can't tell you what they're spending it on in, in detail.
Since.
Because they won't. you what they're spending it on, in, in detail, because they won't do it.
Spending is one thing, return on investment is another, and I think that was one of the things that we had also questioned, is what is the, what is the investment proving to that board, and whether that's our say or not, I don't know, but still, you're correct, seventy-two thousand dollars a year, we should be able to have some sort of return on investment.
Well, that's one question that I would ask as well, um, and I have asked it, I've asked it at those meetings, and I, I, I still don't know if I have a great answer, is what does success look like? How do you measure success of what the CBB is? And you ask hotel owners, and, you know, a lot of times it'll get back to the heads and beds, but I, I don't think that that's necessarily, when you're talking about a visit sock center board, I mean, I, I think that it encompasses more than that.
It does.
I don't necessarily have a great answer as far as what that measurement looks like. I've tried to have several discussions with that in multiple places, but I, I don't, I don't, I don't know what that is, I, I'm not sure. But I think that's the key that needs to happen, is somebody along this line, I mean, it should be answered, what, how do you measure the success of it? I, I don't know that, that necessarily exists.
Advertisements in magazines, advertisements in, you know, national, state, regional, paper advertisements, you can't count the number of returns, you can't count the people that, you know, are visiting because they saw an advertisement here. I think, um, yeah, I don't know.
And I'm not certain that, you know, they're all great points you brought up, but I'm not certain that that's what we're asking. If we handed anybody in the audience seventy-two thousand dollars and said, here, run with it, tell us what you did with it, they'd be so happy to have that money that they'd come back with a detail, yeah, we did this on this date, and we did this, and this, and this, done, cut and dried. Whether they got anything out of it, no problem, but we can't even get that. It's rather fight us. And to me, you know, and I'm not gonna keep kicking it down the road, because it's gonna keep coming back until we get what we need, because we can, if at any point in time, we can just continue collecting that percent, that three percent, and we can put it back in place, once we get everything cut and dried and know what's happening. Um, one of the things is Visitors Guide, I know better. I sold the ads for it for five years. They never paid anything for the Visitors Guide, until they added another twenty-five hundred to last year, but the people that advertise in that Visitors Guide are the ones paying for the printing and the book. The CBB doesn't spend one penny toward it, other than their own ad. So how can you list that as a cost?
There's been a lot of pass-through that shows on their budget that they're not investing, but it, another entity is paying for.
Yeah, and a lot of the things that happening uptown right now, you know, the chalk on the street, um, the craftsalls, all that, that's other agencies that are doing that. And if you ask, oh, we're in collaboration with the CBB, I don't know. Is that right? The other thing is, you come along and, uh, that last quarterly report we got, no promotions, no tours, no conventions. Well, what did you do with three, one quarter of the money that we handed you? I know you pay a lot of advertising in the beginning of the year, but you don't go in the negative because of that. So if you didn't have any tours, and you didn't have any conventions, and you didn't have anything else, what did you spend the money on? And they can't tell us, or won't tell us. So I'm bringing it up just to get, we got the two new council members sitting in the audience, so they know what the frustration's gonna be, right along with the rest of us, but I wanted to get it, the feedback out, because as long as I'm sitting here, it's not gonna go away. Somebody's gonna come up with some answers, because I think we owe the taxpayers, whether they're sock center people, or the people that are coming into town that are paying that three percent, they should be able to know what that three percent is going for.
I agree.
Otherwise, we will go on to the consent agenda. Schedule of claims, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents for a total of the same, November checks, paid claims slash payroll, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. We have resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one oh six, accepting contributions of fifty-five dollars from West Union Combined Charities to be allocated to the ambulance department, sixty dollars from West Union Combined Charities to be allocated to the police department, fifty dollars from the West Union Combined Charities to be allocated to the fire department, and seventy-five dollars from Joe and Elizabeth Niehaus to be allocated to the fire department. And on behalf of the city and the council, I want to thank those people for their contributions. Um, we also had the gambling application for the exempt permit request from Center Mat Youth Wrestling for Bingo on March eighth, twenty twenty-five, at the sock center American Legion. Is there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items.
We have the twenty twenty-five meeting calendar, there are a couple conflicts due to holidays, uh, January first happens to be the first Wednesday, so the EDA and the city council will actually meet on January second, which is Thursday, so that'll push to the next day. And then also, I believe, there's a planning commission meeting in November that falls on Veterans Day, so that'll have to be rescheduled. Other than that, all the meetings are, are going to, are listed here on their regularly scheduled date, so that's just for your information.
I'll just add on the firefighter meeting with the relief is, um...
What's that?
The fire relief meets every Tuesday, every month now, instead of every other.
Oh, every month?
Yeah, we wait monthly.
Just every month now?
Yeah.
Okay, take the other out of there, okay. And then the other that we have is just the franchise letter from Spectrum with channel lineup changes.
Okay, and one other thing, uh, next meeting in January is when I will be picking where everybody gets to go as far as committees and boards and stuff, so Brad has already got to me on where he wants to be placed. Um, Scott, if you could get ahold of me and let me know, and anybody else up here, let me know what committees and boards you wanna be, your interest in being on, and I'll make those appointments. Also, Diane isn't here, but, um, I think on behalf of the rest of the council and the city, I want to thank Diane and Shallen for their time on the council.
Well, thank you guys, I learned a lot from you guys, it's been a fun four years, and Brad and Scott, good luck, you guys. Have fun.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.